Council members Erickson.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Council member Valento is absent tonight, and Mayor Roberts.
Here. If you're able, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, we have a new item on the agenda that we're going to do periodically when it's warranted, and that is to recognize people in the community or that have done great work, community service, and contributed, in this case, contributed to a city commission. So I am going to make a motion that we approve Resolution 04142501, recognizing Diane Halflin, and I have a just a resolution that I want to read publicly. Whereas the City Council of Forest Lake wishes to recognize individuals who have made significant contributions to the well-being, growth, and quality of life in our community. And whereas Diane Halflin was dedicated and passionate volunteer, who selflessly served the City of Forest Lake as a valued member of the Cable Commission for 10 years. And whereas during her tender on the Cable Commission, Diane brought insight, integrity, and commitment, ensuring that public access and communications remains transparent, accessible, and community-focused. Whereas beyond her role in the Cable Commission, Diane was actively involved in numerous volunteer efforts throughout the city, always offering her time, energy, skills, and help and others to enhance the community programs' incentives. And whereas Diane's dedication, warmth, civic spirit left a lasting impression on all who had privilege of working with her. She served as an inspiration to many throughout her tireless advocacy and genuine care for her neighbors and city. And whereas the City of Forest Lake and its residents mourn the loss of Diane and extend deepest sympathies to her family, friends, and those who all knew and loved her. Therefore, is resolved that the City Council of the City of Forest Lake that we hereby recognize and honor the life legacy of Diane Halflin and express her sincere appreciation for her many years of dedication, public service, and her countless contributions to our community. So I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, sir.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And I just would like to add, it's people like this that really make this community special, and we're so grateful for her service, and again, condolences to her loved ones. Great. Open forum. This is an opportunity for the public to speak. Any city matter, please come to the podium, name and address, and... No one on the side?
No one on the side. It was just Mr. Miller, so...
Okay, all right. Hey, we have a consent agenda in front of us. Anyone willing to make a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda, items 7A through 7Q.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Our first item on the regular agenda is Lot 1, Block 1, De Ponti, 3rd Edition, First Right of Refusal. And Abby?
Thank you, Mayor Roberts, members of the council. As the council is aware, staff has been in discussions with GON companies for their potential acquisition of parcels of land in the airport business park. So as a reminder, the city owns two parcels still located along Fenway Avenue in the area where we had had quite a number of business park parcels that the city had marketed over some time. The parcel that's in question with this First Right of Refusal is the southern of the two parcels. And essentially, GON has indicated that they have an interest in purchasing this parcel, but not right at this moment. Given the fact that we've had recent ownership changes with adjacent land use or adjacent landowners, we've reached out to them to talk about some kind of small area planning for this to not only meet potential city needs of commercial development, but also the potential recreation needs in the area of the athletic complex. GON understands this, and so they would like to enter into a First Right of Refusal with the city that would essentially allow them at no cost to have kind of a chance at making the exact same offer if we receive an offer during this kind of time period in which we're trying to do some planning. This isn't necessarily as customary, but because we have been in these long-term negotiations, we have seen concept plans for this property, and we do believe that it could develop in a commercial fashion by GON or others. But we really need that time right now more than anything to work with the neighbors on it to kind of figure out what do we really want there. So tonight, for your consideration, is a First Right of Refusal agreement for Lot 1, Block 1, De Ponti, 3rd Edition, and staff would recommend that we enter into that agreement with GON Development LLC. Any questions?
Any questions, council? Any thoughts or...?
No, I think I read through this. I mean, we had a number of discussions at the EDA level about, you know, there's some things we might want to do with just understanding the planned usage around that, and so this is going to protect those interests of the cities, correct?
Correct. Essentially, it's going to kind of... We're not actively marketing it. If we got an offer in this time period, it would allow GON to match that offer. But essentially, it's told the only interested party right now, "Hold up, give us a second. We need to plan a few things here." They're well aware of all of the conversations that are happening, the potential land use changes that could happen through here, and are very respectful of that and understand that that's something that the city may not anticipate selling quite yet or in the near future, so...
Perfect, thank you.
Kind of goes hand in hand with the next location or the next item on the agenda, too.
Okay, but two separate motions.
Two separate motions.
All right. If there's no other discussions, anyone interested in making a motion?
Make a motion that we accept enclosed First Right of Refusal agreement for Lot 1, Block 1, De Ponti, 3rd Edition with GON Properties LLC.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, Lot 1, Block 2, De Ponti, 1st Edition Option Agreement. Abby?
Thank you. Again, as the council is aware, the staff has been in discussions with GON Development LLC for a number of years about their potential acquisition of the northern parcel that still remains, the Lot 1, Block 1, De Ponti, 1st Edition. Most recently, the city has negotiated the enclosed option agreement with GON Development LLC. Essentially, what the option agreement allows them to do is market the property for industrial, business, service, office, and/or commercial recreation users, and then enter into good-faith negotiations on a purchase agreement for the properties. It gives them one year, and for a cost of, I think it was $15,000. Yep, I did include that in the memo for you. Included in the option agreement is a little bit of precursor, though, for that purchase agreement. Essentially, it locks in the purchase price of $353,500. It also indicates that GON will design and plan for a 30,000, minimum 30,000 square foot structure or structures, depending on kind of what that development plan looks like, and that they would have a finished valuation of $1.73 a square foot. That, based on our county assessor, is kind of the going rate for nice development on that site. And then lastly, there would also be in the purchase agreement a deed restriction that would allow for the reversion of the property back to the public, so back to us, if GON fails to develop exactly as we kind of negotiate in that future purchase agreement. There would be a sunset period on that and a time to give them ample time to be able to develop. We're not there quite yet, but some of those things are outlined right now, just putting them on notice, that those are things that we're going to expect in a purchase agreement in the future. GON's completely in agreement, so tonight, for your consideration, is an option agreement for Lot 1, Block 2, De Ponti, 1st Edition. I'd recommend you approve it. Or accept it? Prove it?
Any additional questions for Abby or discussion? All right, anyone willing to make a motion then on that?
I'll make a motion for Lot 1, Block 2, De Ponti, 1st Edition Option Agreement with GON Properties LLC.
A second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Those aye?
Aye. All in favor.
Yeah, opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving right along here. Cryptocurrency kiosk. Amanda's going to walk us through this.
Restart in five minutes? Okay, five minutes?
You have five minutes, Amanda.
Got it. I can do it. It just said to restart in five minutes on my computer screen. Thank you, Your Honor, council. So tonight, we will be discussing the crypto kiosk registration ordinance in your packet. Just a note, I know we've had a work session about this. Some of this material is going to be repetitive for you, but it's important that I get it onto the public record. So I will do a quick summary of the cryptocurrency kiosks, how they are being used in these fraud schemes, and then the proposed ordinance. As a reminder, these cryptocurrency kiosks are machines that allow consumers to buy and/or sell cryptocurrency through an ATM-type machine. These are often found in gas stations, grocery stores, and pharmacies. Typically, the cryptocurrency kiosks allow consumers to come in and purchase cryptocurrency, but not sell cryptocurrency. Often, these machines mark up the cryptocurrency between 20% to 30%, meaning that if you were to purchase the cryptocurrency online, you would be paying, you know, typically, it's between one cent and $1 per transaction. If you do it at the machine, you're going to be paying whatever the value is of that cryptocurrency plus a 20% to 30% markup that goes to the kiosk operator. These are new to the marketplace. Five years ago, these machines did not exist. Right now, in the regulation world for these kiosks, there is a little bit of federal regulation. Kiosk operators are required to register with the U.S. Treasury Department as a money service business, but the kiosks themselves are not tracked or regulated in any way. State regulations, this last year, Minnesota Legislature in the 2024 cycle did add some new legislation that requires kiosk operators to obtain a license with the Department of Commerce. The statute also requires some disclosure requirements. In other words, some disclosures that the kiosk operator needs to provide to customers that would be coming to the kiosk. It provides a daily limit for new customers and fraud protections for new customers. The state regulations define a new customer as someone who has been transacting with that kiosk for 72 hours or less. It's important to understand that the way that criminals use these kiosks, there isn't a new customer, because the criminal is giving the victim the criminal's account essentially through a QR code. So under state law, no new customer is really involved in these transactions. According to the FBI, in 2023, $5.6 billion was lost to cryptocurrency fraud. $189 million of that was via kiosks. It's important to note that this is what's been reported. Typically, law enforcement estimates that about 1/3 of fraud cases go reported. Locally, in Forest Lake, 2023 through 2024, we saw $300,000 worth of fraud just through our kiosks located in our city alone. White Bear Lake had $125,000 in reported fraud. And in Woodbury, from 2021 to 2024, $6.6 million in losses related to cryptocurrency fraud. That's both online and in the kiosks located in Woodbury. Woodbury was actually hired a lobbyist last year. That was instrumental in the state legislation that was passed. So just quickly, as a reminder, how criminals use these kiosks. Typically, what they're going to do is they're going to impersonate law enforcement, or occasionally, they will, you know, be an investment-type scheme. And they overwhelmingly prey on older and vulnerable populations, particularly widows or widowers. They will reach out to the victim. An example, this would be they'd reach out claiming that they have like an outstanding warrant for a failure to show up for jury duty, right? That's not true, but it sounds true enough. Oftentimes, what will happen is they will hang up during that first call and then call back from a fake, you know, caller ID line that looks similar to a law enforcement phone number or a law enforcement ID, but is not actually a law enforcement ID. They will keep their victim on the phone, if they can, for the entire transaction. And what I mean by the entire transaction is I mean, often, they will, if... Oh, no. Sorry. If these individuals... Do you want me to pull my, grab my computer?
I'm going to bring mine up there. Give me one sec while I close everything else.
So these individuals, they'll, if they don't have access to a large amount of cash, you know, at their residence at that time, they will stay on the phone with them while they have them go to a bank and withdraw cash. They will stay on the phone with them while they are interacting with the teller so that they can communicate, "Here's what I want you to say to the teller, if they ask you questions about why you're withdrawing this money," that sort of a thing. And then they will stay on the phone with them while they go to these kiosks and deposit the money. I tried. Sorry. There we go. I just have to go... Okay. I think I went through all of kind of the process of how they confuse and manipulate their victim during the scam. So they put the money into the account. As I mentioned, it's not going to be in an account that the actual victim owns. It's going to be in an account that the perpetrator owns. And of course, you know, within minutes, it's gone. The nature of the cryptocurrency kiosk and the cryptocurrency world is such that, once gone, it's almost impossible... It's not impossible, but it's almost impossible to, you know, get these funds back because it's transacted, and the way that cryptocurrency works, it's, they don't have like a wire, you know, transfer kind of system that we can go back and look through. So just a reminder, this came before the council on the March 17th work session. At that work session, the council was provided with three options. We could do nothing. We could ban the kiosks and/or... We could register the kiosks. Based on the council feedback, it was to move forward with the registration ordinance and then to beef up some of the conditions of that registration. So just quickly, registration ordinances, registering businesses or regulating uses is not a new thing to cities. We have broad authority under the statutes to do exactly this. We do this in lots of areas: tobacco, alcohol, cannabis, massage therapists, tattoo parlors. Basically, if you're a business that has an obvious public health or safety component, we have a right to have regulation around your business. These kiosks are no different. With the amount of fraud that is running through these machines, in fact, the Iowa Attorney General did a study and determined that in the machines that they were looking at, 98% of the transactions were fraudulent transactions. So when we're talking about fraud on that scale, plus the fact that we know people are bringing large amounts of cash to these machines, so there is a safety component simply with the traveling with that amount of cash, these machines are clearly something that the city can regulate. The registration ordinance that is in your packet tonight is going to really deal with the property owner, also known as the hosting business, in the ordinance. And that is because the kiosk operator, those businesses could be anywhere. They could be local, they could be national, they could be international. It's difficult to regulate an entity that you can't find. But the hosting business, the Holiday Gas Station, the Cub Foods, the Walgreens, they're here. They are clearly in our city. So the hosting business is the entity that's required to register the kiosk. A kiosk can only be registered with the city if it conforms to the following. It needs to have the application filled out. It needs to pay a $2,000 registration fee. That is an annual fee. That fee will cover our costs related to the registration and enforcement. So PD has to go out there and do an inspection to make sure that they meet the rest of these requirements I'll talk through in a second. And then they're also going to be doing compliance checks throughout the year to ensure that they're continuing to stay in compliance. The PD has to do a background check to make sure that they don't have these outstanding instances of fraud. And a few other things, that is why, for this particular registration, the fee is so high as compared to other uses. They need to provide a copy of their valid state license for the kiosk operator. They need to provide a copy of their lease or rental agreement between the hosting business and the kiosk operator. And this is because what we have discovered is that a lot of times, the hosting business gets a percentage of the money that runs through the kiosk, and so it's important to understand how they're related. They have to provide us with a copy of any additional information that they would need to provide the state for the state license. They need written confirmation from the Forest Lake Police Department that the kiosk operator has had no more than two instances of substantiated fraud as determined by the police department, by any kiosk that would be owned or operated by that kiosk operator within the city within the past six months. So let me break that down just a little bit. What that means is that the police department will look through the fraud reports that they have. At this point, we have one kiosk that has never had a report of fraud through the machine. We have three other machines. They have all had many instances of fraud. So the three machines that have had many instances of verified fraud as determined by the police department, which is where they're going to look at the complaint, they're going to look at the information provided by, you know, the victim who comes in, and determine, is this substantiated? Is there enough evidence here to substantiate this as a fraudulent transaction? And the reason that that is the test versus some sort of a criminal conviction is, as I mentioned, the individuals involved in this are not here. They are not really somebody that's able to be found by the Forest Lake Police Department and charged with a crime. So the mechanism here is substantiated instances of fraud. This matches some things that the state statute is doing. So the city is in good company in terms of sort of the measures that we're using to determine, you know, why somebody would be operating illegally. Or, excuse me, why somebody would be allowing fraud through their machines. And then when we met at the council level, initially, it was three instances within 12 months, but as directed by council, that has been narrowed down. They get two within six months. The kiosk operator also needs to post a sign that the city will provide warning about the dangers related to fraud and scams. They need to have a dedicated closed-circuit camera on that kiosk in a position or however the Forest Lake Police Department would like it to be. They need to provide video footage to the Forest Lake within 48 hours of request, so if there's some sort of incident there that PD would need to review. As I mentioned, pass compliance checks by Forest Lake PD. So those are the things that the hosting business has to provide proof of, although obviously, they're going to be working with the kiosk operator to obtain a lot of that information. In addition, if the hosting business, so the Holiday Gas Station, the Walgreens, the Cub Foods, has had a previous registration that's been denied, suspended, or revoked, they do not get to have a new registration for 24 months. So basically, they're in timeout for 24 months. The goal of this ordinance is really to balance the protection of the community. It's clear this is a problem. $300,000 worth of fraud in our community in a year and a half is outrageous. But we're also trying to balance that with not instituting a full ban on the kiosks. And if there is some sort of legitimate purpose for these kiosks, they can continue to operate as long as they, you know, create protections for consumers. I would note that since we've met, both Oak Park Heights and Woodbury are now considering this exact same ordinance as well. And also, one note is Senator Karen Housley is aware of this issue. She's been in conversation actually with the mayor of Stillwater. So if it's something that members of the council or members of the public would like to reach out to a legislator, you know, legislator to let them know, she might be a good first stop, as she's already learning about the problems that cities are facing related to these kiosks. So that is either my presentation. I have two proposed... I'm available for questions, comments, and then I do have two proposed motions. One would be for the ordinance itself, and then one is the resolution to allow summary publication.
Great, thank you. Counsel, any questions or concerns or discussion where we're headed here tonight?
No, I think it was a great summary of our conversation from the workshop. You implemented some of the changes that we had recommended, so I appreciate that. And I think it's a badly needed step forward.
Chief, any additional thoughts on the police department's side of things?
No, I think this is a fantastic step in the right direction. I want to thank Amanda Farver work on this, and definitely Detective Nathan Olstad. So, yeah, no questions, no concerns.
I would second that. Detective Olstad coming forward to you and, you know, has got us to where we're at tonight. And thank you for your work on this. It's crazy to think about the crime or the fraud that's going on out there. And so, you know, this is a good step without going too restrictive, and like, some cities are contemplating, so I think this is great, so thank you.
With that, is anyone wanting to make a motion?
I would make the motion to approve Ordinance 750 enacting City Code Title IX, Chapter 121, virtual currency kiosk registration, including the three attachments.
All right, and motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Anyone wanting to make a motion on the second?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 04142503, authorizing the summary publication of Ordinance 750.
We have a motion of second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Great, thank you again.
Thank you.
Right, so item, regular agenda item 8D, ATV, UTV operation, golf cart operations. So we've gone, we've had a couple workshops on this, worked through this, a lot of different moving parts here, different ways that we could do this. And so today, we've realized that there might be a little bit more work that we want to do on this, and so to get this right, I'm moving that we table this till the April 28 meeting to allow staff some additional time to research possible permitting alternatives on the ATV and the UTV operation.
I'll second that.
Second. Do we have any discussion or any additional thoughts on this? I think this is the right, as much as I think we would like to get this thing approved, and I think we will eventually get there. Just taking this pause for two weeks to make sure we have it right is... So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll table this. Discussion, item nine. It doesn't look like we have anything listed there, so we'll go right into staff updates. And Jolene, we'll start with you.
No updates this evening.
Abby?
I have two updates. Our city planner, Ken Roberts, has put in his resignation. He's accepted a position as the Development Director with the City of North St. Paul. His last day is next Friday. So we'll be meeting with Bolton and Mick's Planning Division to look at bringing in some temporary planning services to help us through this time period until we are able to fill some positions in the Community Development Department. Wanted to let you know that. We thank Ken for his service here and his time here. He's been a wonderful asset, really helping us kind of reunite a division that was lost for a decade. And then the only other thing I wanted to let the council know, I have been asked... And then the only other thing I wanted to let the council know, I have been asked and accepted to speak at a Sensible Land Use Coalition meeting next, next week, the week after the 23rd. They are hosting a Twin Cities Development Roundup, where they will have four panel presentations of the four quadrants of the metro area, and each of the panels will be four cities in that quadrant, so I'll be speaking with Blaine, Hugo, Lake Elmo about Forest Lake and just our development opportunities, development plans, lot inventory. Already, they have attendance that they anticipate greater than some of their normal monthly sessions. The last I heard, that over half of the participants that appeared to have had some interest in real estate and the development community. Typically, they're kind of garnered more for planners, developers, engineers, so it should be a good time to at least just showcase what we're doing here in Forest Lake and the opportunity that's available in the development community.
Great. Chief Peterson?
Yeah, just one update for you. Today, our two new officers, Tyler Carpenter and Hunter McBride, started with us, and they got a tour of the entire facility here and got to meet a lot of the staff that they'll be working with. I think it's a little overwhelming when you're a new employee, a new police officer coming in, so I'm sure they'll get through those jitters in the next few weeks, but a lot of training that's going to be going on the first two weeks, and then they'll be starting their true field training. So we welcome them.
Yeah, welcome. Captain Handgraf, as long as you're here, anything to add tonight?
No, sir.
Okay, great. Orion?
Mayor of City Council, a few things. Just to let you know, if you haven't driven down Broadway, Washington County started that project today with setting up the traffic control. That project's anticipated to go through June 15th. Obviously, between now and that timeframe, there's going to be some traffic control changes, so during the pre-construction meeting, they reiterated they wanted to get that westbound lane closure open up as fast as possible, so they'll focus on that as that project proceeds. If people are starting to ask, there's some stuff being kind of brought out to Highway 97. That project's anticipated to start June 3rd. And then this week, we have two bid openings that will include North Shore Trail and the local street project, and the South Water Tower Rehab.
Great, thank you. Amanda, do you have anything else for us tonight?
No.
Mark?
Just a couple of quick ones, Mr. Mayor. Just want to remind folks that, especially local folks, community in our surrounding area, we do have a number of open positions posted, our finance director position being maybe sort of the highlight there, but we have a number of open positions on the website, and we'll continue to be adding. And we approved another one tonight, so there's a number of different opportunities to work with us here at the city, and we hope people will take advantage of that. Also, some opening, open positions on our commissions and that kind of thing, too. So plenty of opportunities for people to get involved, and I think that's all I needed to highlight.
Nothing for me.
Cost member Larson?
Nothing to add, thank you. No updates tonight.
I don't have, I have one update. I, last week, attended a couple days, the emergency management training down at Washington County. Doug Borgland, who, Bergland, who is a, was a previous firefighter here for the Forest Lake, did a great job. We went through a number of activities, one of them was a staged. The concern now, as you, if you heard, if you heard in the media, what happened in New Orleans, where, you know, you're using vehicles to, you know, cause harm to people, so we went through a full-out, full-day practice on how that we would handle that. This particular one happened at a Memorial Day Parade in Afton, so it was quite fascinating, and it does, you know, bring more concerns and some angst, to be honest with you, but I know that we've got great people in place, both at the county and local here in Forest Lake. I would like maybe to invite Mr. Bergland up to a workshop to just talk that through with the council, and I know that Councilman Erickson and Larson came to a training that was, kind of abbreviated that back in December, which brought, you know, opened their eyes to a lot of other things, so I appreciate that invitation, and Chief Newman attended that as well. So, other than that, that's all I have. Without any other business coming, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.